Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the meeting of the Council of the City of Southfield for Monday, July 30, 2012. Madam Chair, would you please call for all?
Thank you, Mr. Prakash. Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Seizer.
Here.
Mr. Liam.
Here.
Ms. Seymour. You have seven members present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you please stand and join us with a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to take a moment to ask you if you have a cell phone. Please turn it off or turn it to vibrate. Is this a business meeting? Are we here to conduct business in the City of Southfield? First item tonight is, do we have a representative from the South Open Shelter? I don't have your name in front of me, but if you'd like to come in and tell us, I know you wanted to tell us something about what's going on in the open, South Open Shelter.
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to this body. My name is Elizabeth Meier, and I'm the Director of Development for South Open Shelter. Recently, I had the opportunity to meet Councilman Moss and invite him to come for a tour of our facility. After being housed in downtown Royal Oak for over 25 years, we've moved into Laker Village. We're now, our administrative headquarters are now based on 12 Mile Road between Southfield and Evergreen. So, we really want to take the opportunity to introduce the organization to this body and make you aware of the resources we're providing to the community. SOS is a rotating emergency shelter, meaning that we partner with local congregations, including many here in the City of Southfield, to provide emergency shelter for those in need. We have been in existence since 1985 and really grown our program from serving the chronically homeless to, over the past decade, over half of the people that we've served are homeless for the first time. Our program has extended beyond just providing emergency shelter to providing supportive services to help people reach self-sufficiency. It was important for us to make sure that this body knew that we were in the community now and serving people that were at risk. We were founded in 1985 from a group of South Open clergy, actually from Southfield, Royal Oak, Cable Park area, to respond to a growing number of homeless individuals in the community. In the past decade, we've seen a really transition from homeless individuals to homeless families. Nobody is actually housed at our facility. Our facility provides the supportive services, whereas people overnight are, the overnight accommodations are within congregation. So, even though our administrative headquarters are based in Laker Village, we actually would say that our footprint is the entire community of Open County. There's a really a wide variety of programs and services that we provide our clients, but primarily, it's really crisis resolution, supportive services, and back to self-sufficiency. We've had some recent major accomplishments that will bring some new resources to the organization as well as services to our clients. We've recently been designated a Hun recipient of funding for supportive housing apartment units, so those will be scattered sites throughout the area where we'll be able to help get people off the street and into housing. These programs are really targeted to provide services specifically around mental health services and legal aid services to get people out of the cycle that they're in. We've also been recently designated a United Way Fundee, so that'll be very exciting for our next coming six-year. I brought along with me today annual reports to share with the council and everybody that's here today, just to provide additional information so that you know what we're doing for the community. We have resource guides available and things like that to help people that are low-income or at risk. I want to, I don't want to take up too much time, but I just, I really appreciate being able to speak to this body. I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to take questions? No, okay.
No, we have one question.
Yes, what's your line?
Pardon?
What's your home number? Oh, the home number for South Open Shelter is 248-809-3723. Again, just so that the group knows, nobody is being housed at our facility. Our facility is really based around supportive services. We have an onsite computer lab as well as clinic space, family and child playroom, and those kind of facilities, as well as case managers that are helping our clients work through the program. I would encourage anybody here that's interested to come for a tour, as well as potentially participate in one of the host week activities. There are congregations throughout Open County, or throughout Southfield, including Hope United Methodist and Church of the Transfiguration, Cherazetic, that have all been involved with us throughout the years. So, I just appreciate the opportunity. There's so much to go into that I feel, I don't want to take up too much time, so I will pass you.
Please, help your hand to the board, please.
Absolutely. And thank you so much, and I would encourage anybody who would like to learn more about our programs and services to come for a tour.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We appreciate the community needs to know about this, especially in these times. Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I appreciate the council president for putting this on the agenda after I met Liz at a city event earlier this year. I did notice that it popped up in our community. It said 12 Mile and Southfield properly and Laker Village, but it extends into the Southfield community. And it was an eye-opening experience just because you realize that there are families that really are one emergency or one crisis away from losing secure housing options. And this is an important thing that I thought Liz should broadcast, televise a meeting to our community, because they've moved essentially their administrative headquarters into our backyard. One last quick point, which was interesting, you know, obviously they're in need of clothing donations, and you think as we donate clothes to those in need, you know, it's usually an old tee-shirt or sweatpants or something that we wanted to discard, but what they're in particular in need of is business-type attire. For people who are in need of a job and if you don't have the proper attire to get it to get back up on their feet, so I encourage the community at large, if you're in a position where you can't donate business attire, contact Liz at the South Open Shelter.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. That's a good point.
Okay, Mr. President.
Definitely, sure.
That one point that you were making about business attire, Men's Warehouse has recently been collecting, yeah, trade-ins, easy-use trade-ins, you know, well, that are still in style, and they give you a percentage of jobs, and they donate the suits and business clothes to people that are in need of it. Maybe they need to contact Men's Warehouse.
We, given that men's warehouse has some activity, bought it in that project, it's still a phenomenal project.
Okay, but it's just something that...
Absolutely, and I will...
Something people need to be aware of. All right, thank you, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
We have no comments this evening. Next, we come to the minutes. Committee of the whole meeting in June 11, special meeting in June 18, director meeting in June 18, call in the chairman, call in Mr. Fraser, call in Prakash.
I agree, they created a whole meeting in June 11, a special meeting in June 18, and director meeting in June 18, 2012.
Motion by Mr. Prakash, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor.
Aye.
All in favor, motion has been carried. Next, we come to the consent agenda, and I'm going to read the portions in more detail for those who are watching at home or will be watching in the replay. Item A is authorization to purchase fire items, castings, mounts, and related perks from East Jordan Iron Works of Oak Park, Michigan, in a not-to-exceed amount of $120,000, which is flat to last year's expenditures for these items. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2012-2013 water and sewer budget. Item B is authorization in a not-to-exceed amount of $57,000 to cover the cost of the brad injection system for road repairs called dural patching for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. This includes the heat emulsion tank and the asphalt emulsion materials for repairing coddle and other minor street repairs. This represents a 2.7% annual increase since 2010, reflecting the petroleum-based nature of the asphalt emulsion materials. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2012-13 local and major streets budget. Item C is a word of bid to superior demolition of Robbins, Michigan, in the amount of $13,999 to demolish the dilapidated building and set up a site at 25430 West Nine Mile Road in accordance with the demolition order issued by the 46th District Court. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2012-13 budget contractual services account. Item D is a word of bid to superior demolition of Robbins, Michigan, in the amount of $17,820 for demolition and site clearings at 24818 Lowell Lane. The residential structure is significantly fired and water damaged and needs to be demolished. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2012-2013 budget contractual services account. Item E is council authorization from the mayor and city clerk to sign an agreement with AEW Core Property Trust of Boston, Massachusetts, for the investment of up to 2.5 million of Southfield employment retirement system assets in core U.S. real estate. This is in accordance with the council-approved asset allocation model for the retirement system. Item F is council authorization from the mayor and city clerk to sign an agreement in the amount of $6,267 for the Open County Road Commission to reimburse the city for a portion of the 2012 costs incurred by the city in sweeping county roads, 10 Mile Road, 12 Mile Road, and Losa Road, located within the City of Southfield. While the county reimbursement, county reimbursement covers only three sweepings, July, August, and October, it may take several multiples of three to maintain all major streets to a uniform and acceptable standard throughout the city. Item G is authorization from the mayor and city clerk to sign an agreement with the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation for that entity to provide 90% of the funding for a senior social worker to continue to be located at McDonald Towers. The remaining 10% is funded within the 2012-2013 human services budget to cover the portion of time and effort that is available for the senior social worker to assist with programs for the general senior population within citywide Southfield. Any motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve consent agenda items C, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Support.
Motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Seizer, all in favor. Um, Madam, yes, Ms. Jordan.
The question I wanted to comment on before we go, and that is consent agenda item C and D, and Chair of Mr. Sharet, I noticed that we are demolishing two buildings, and there are two separate companies that are doing the services, and one being $13,000 and the other being $17,000. Is there some way that you could possibly consider using one company or just, I don't think the difference is right?
Through the chair, it was two separate demolitions. It is the same company that won through low bid in both. We had to bid them separately, and the same company was significantly low bid, and they have done work for us in the past and for other municipalities to a high standard and have stayed within their budgets. The first demolition is from a court order, and that is on Nine Mile Road, and that is the site of a business that, a fire, and it had to be demolished simply to clear the site and make it available for future development. And the second is a residential property that now is the, under the ownership of the city, and is being demolished for the improvements of the neighborhood, and also that we then could either sell the land to a developer in the future.
Is there any way we could possibly bundle these things in the future or making sure that we can get the cost lower, we go out for a bid and then give them X amount of properties, which could possibly use to our advantage?
It's a good point. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of these demolitions, and I hope that we never have to have so many that there would be economies of scale. But in these particular, these two demolitions, there are two different types of operations, you know, one being residential, the other commercial, different materials, different issues, and we bid them separately, but if we had, if we had more than this, we probably would bundle them, so we will consider that in the future. But these two, I would doubt that it would have made that much difference, but it's a good point. If we have, if we have a bigger, larger, for example, larger facilities that need to be demolished, or a larger number, it would certainly make sense. We have taken note of your comments. Thank you very much.
My other question, Madam Chair, has to do, has to do with consent agenda item C. And I see the payment or the personnel cost for the senior citizen social worker.
You mean G?
I'm sorry, G, is $94,000 or it's all included in those personnel?
That's the total cost, all wages, benefit, costs, and anything having to do with that position, which 90% is paid by the nonprofit housing corporation.
Thank you.
Well...
Madam Chair.
Um, Prakash?
Yes, I had a question also on the demolition, Mr. Sharet. $4,000 difference between the two, one's commercial, one's residential, but $4,000 is quite a large percentage of the total amount, that what would he do that year?
Residential was A, complex, B, bigger, and C, basically more difficult challenge. And our city attorney is raising her hand, so she can help out here too, through the chair.
One of the other differences to the president would be that there was an in-ron pool in the local land property, and that had to be out there and filled, and it was an extensive, inexpensive process.
Thank you for your attendance, Mr. Chris. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Seizer, all in favor.
Aye.
All in favor, motion has been carried. Next, we come to public hearing. Uh... Ms. Jordan?
Through the chair. The first public hearing is a second modification to pass that building company consent judgment to permit the addition of religious institutions and accessory buildings or uses customarily installed to such use if 15612, 15638 West Nine Mile Road, the east 18 feet of Lot 9 and all of lots 10 through 13 of the Holiday Manor subdivision, which property is located on the north side of West Nine Mile Road, west to Greenfield Road. The consent judgment has been modified based upon consensus at the 71612 Committee of the whole meeting. A representative is here to make a few brief comments before the public hearing.
Please give your name and address for the reference.
My name is Neil Single, address is 17365 Sherfield Place in Southfield.
Would you like to start?
I guess in summary, I just wanted to, I wanted to thank everybody, not that this thing has improved or anything at this point, but it's been a long journey, and I want to thank the Site Plan Commission, Planning Commission, the city council, the mayor for support, the city manager, as well as the city attorney, the city clerk, and the specialty. I wanted to thank Tarek Road and Just Spex, and the Planning Commission, who have been very, very helpful. This is a very out-of-the-box type of project that we are, that we're taking on, something that was a little bit different, and throughout this whole course, about two, you know, two to four months or so, there was negotiations, there was, there's a lot of great feedback that we got from council, and it wasn't, it wasn't an easy thing, I think, for council to see at the beginning, but I think as time, as time went on and as the plan evolves, I think the city really has seen that the fact that we do this and put this new synagogue inside this, inside that new facility that we're trying, it's really got an impact on the community, the Jewish Orthodox community in Southfield. As I've said before, there's a lot of young families that are moving into the community more and more, both on the north side of Ten Mile and the south side of Ten Mile, and, you know, news travels fast when there's good news, and I can tell you that there's so much joy within the community that the city can consider this and hopefully approve this, to make this happen. It's going to change the lives of many, it's going to change families, it's going to change children, the education of children, and, you know, as I've said before, the City of Southfield's motto is "The Center of It All." We want to be part of the center of the Jewish community, and we want to thank you for your support.
Thank you. This is the public hearing, and we start the public hearing open, and anyone who wishes to comment, please step forward. Your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
My name is Pamela Gerald. My address is PO Box 155 Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I was at the council meetings when this project was being discussed. I'm in total support of the project, but one thing I don't understand is why does the city feel the need to create so many consent judgments? And are those consent judgments made open and available and transparent to the public? And is it explained to the public why the consent judgments are, why it's necessary? That's my only concern, but I'm in total support of the project, so could you, if you're inclined to do so, or if you even have the legal knowledge, can you explain a consent judgment and why it's necessary for such a project? Thank you. And I am an independent voice for Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think none, I declare the public hearing closed. Council?
Madam Chair.
Prakash?
I move the second modification, consent judgment to permit the addition of religious institutions and accessory buildings or uses customarily installed to such use.
Support. Um, I have a motion by Mrs. Prakash, supported by Mr. Liam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, motion has been carried.
Madam Chair, we add that this has been discussed through Site Plan Committee and several committees at the whole meeting, so that seems like we expedited this, it's been gone over and over and over, so we finally come to some kind of agreement to make this all come together, so all the parties involved, I just want to thank them.
I want to compliment Mr. Mandel, Seymour Mandel, the architect, for doing a beautiful redesign of the front of the building. I think our common work has taken to heart, and it's worked out very nicely, so thank you for all your efforts.
Can I make a comment also?
Ms. Jordan?
I was very much against this project in the beginning, but after driving around in the community and seeing what's on the other side of Ten Mile and looking at the redesign of this building, I think it'll be great for the city of Southfield.
I'd have to add that same, that I had some concerns first about the conversion of the property, but with what has been done with this, it has really solved those issues, and I think we wish you very well, we wish you good fortune, and happy to have been part of the community.
Madam Chair.
And, Madam Mayor?
Yes. I just want to say to the architect and to the community, I was, was very concerned about withdrawing and the first rendering we saw denied how women, the redevelopment. This is something meant for the city to think this is the first time we've ever allowed a place of worship in a previous commercial site. And as the community grows in the City of Southfield, you've been a part of the community throughout our history. I find this to be a growth for the city. It's exciting for the community because the community has grown, and I want it to be clear that the City of Southfield has partnered and has really looked at the project. We had a lot of discussion about the rendering, and when I saw the new rendering, I was impressed. I was impressed because I was very honest at the meeting and spoke my concerns, so we, hopefully, there's a ribbon cutting, and we walk through the doors, and we'll be standing there together to walk into your new building. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jordan?
I am very happy that we're all, as Paul said, it's just, it just makes me think that somebody must have a little bit of happiness around here someplace tonight. So, anyway, I'm happy to hear the verdict.
Well, when you have people working together, you gotta nice yourself, and that's what happens, so... All right, so let's move on. We have, Senator Crowe, who will be...
Thank you, through the chair. Our next public hearing is GP 1241, a special use request by Nathan Zach, Right Price Appliances, to allow an appliance resale shop in the I-1 industrial Southfield district located at 22476 Telegraph Road, on the east side of Telegraph Road between Norcrest and West Nine Mile Road. I have a brief video presentation.
GP 1241 is a special use request of Nathan Zach to allow an appliance resale store on the property. The property is located at 22476 on the southeast corner of Telegraph and Sergeant Road in Section 33 of the city. The subject property, as well as the property to the south, is owned I-1 Industrial and P Vehicular Parking. The property to the north across Sergeant is owned V-3 General Business and P Vehicular Parking. The properties to the west across Telegraph Road is owned I-1 Industrial and I Allen Light Industrial. The property to the east is owned R-1 Single Family Residential. With regard to the land use, the subject property is developed from a vacant Oriental Trading Furniture Store. The property to the north across Sergeant is developed at the Strip Shopping Center. The properties to the west across Telegraph Road are developed from the U-Haul Vehicle Rental Center and the Mark General Contractors Building. The property to the east is developed from a single-family home fronting Sergeant Street. The site contains .58 acres of land with 100 feet of frontage on Telegraph Road, 153.37 feet of frontage on Sergeant Street, and a depth of 253.37 feet. The special use request is to permit a non-industrial retail use within the I-1 Industrial zoning district. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use work, the standards and conditions of Article 20 industrial zoning as it relates to special uses. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Conference of Master Plan noting technology corridor south area for this parcel.
A representative is here to make a few comments before you move on. A representative is here to make a few comments before you move on, Chair.
Would you like to step forward, please, and give us your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Margaret Simlaw, my address is 3112...
What's the address?
Yes.
Go ahead.
31112, Mountain Road, Warren, Michigan, 48092.
Whatever you'd like to say about this.
Okay, well, I work for Nathan Zach, I worked for him for a while and through a couple of different projects. I handle opening up new facilities that he chooses to venture into. This particular one is the appliance store. He owns another company called Great Lakes Electronics that he started when he was 18 and his mother's garage, he decided he wanted to start recycling, and he found that a lot of his neighbors and family members were just throwing away old computers as technology was changing. And he's loved that, you know, since he runs, like, with so many other things, my computer recycle electronics as well. So he started in his garage at 18, he's now 32, and he's grown on Great Lakes Electronics for now. We now have a facility in Warren, one in Sterling Heights, one in Atlanta, and one in Chicago. So it's grown rapidly over the past...
What do you want to tell us about Right Price, Right Price Plan?
Well, in his ventures with Great Lakes Electronics, we've signed a couple of contracts with Sears and a couple other smaller warehouses. And Sears, you know, when they bring you new appliances, home goods, washers, dryers, et cetera, they offer to haul away your old ones. Now, we didn't sign a contract with Sears to take all of those old refrigerators, washers, dryers, white goods, we call them, and the ones that cannot be repaired, we recycle environmentally friendly ways, we recycle them. The ones that can be fixed, which we like to reuse as much as possible versus recycling, we harvest parts from the other models and basically create, take all of the high-end products and make them able to be used again. So this appliance store is an outlet for us to be able to get those back into the community. And we wanted to place it in Southfield because, you know, there's a lot of stores come along Eight Mile, but a lot of them are low-end appliances, and I personally don't feel safe going down there to go buy used appliances. So we thought that Southfield would be a great place where, you know, families can go that can't necessarily afford a dishwasher or dryer, but still want to get something nice for their homes. So that's why we chose Southfield.
All right. You can sit down if you finish. This is the public hearing, and if the public is open and anyone wishes any comments, please step forward. Your name and address to the record.
Good evening, I'm Avanti Mary Waters, former state representative, 1276 Navarre Place in the city of Detroit, 4207. So I was listening to the young lady talking about the resale appliance shop, and I thought, well, I should comment on that, but a great idea it is. And, you know, the city of Southfield is also the city where small businesses are thriving a great deal. And oftentimes, people do look for an opportunity to purchase washers and dryers, and stoves and refrigerators and so forth and so on, and they cannot afford to go to Sears to pay for brand new. And so I just want to congratulate this particular company for such one thought idea and resale shop, and it's certainly something that I support. And we just say that, you know, I have a washer, a work pool washer, if I basically write that, I can probably get to you as well. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Anyone?
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. I agree with Ms. Waters, I'm in total support of this project. I think, for one, it's in the proper area, the industrial zoning district. Over 20 years ago, I used to sell appliances for a major retailer when I was a very, very young girl, and I know that a lot of people could not afford to buy upscale new appliances. So if someone is willing to take another person's trash and make it another person's treasure, I think that's an absolutely phenomenal idea. The gentleman started at age 18, he's now 32, he has two companies, that's absolutely phenomenal. And this would be an example of giving a business a tax agreement to come to the city of Southfield. So I'm in total support of this project, and I wish you a lot of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Council?
The Chair.
Mr. Jordan?
I make a motion that we approve.
Motion made by Mr. Jordan, supported by Mr. Land, to approve GP 1241, Right Price Appliances. Council?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. In our material, it showed that Mr. Spence had a list of things that are suggested, one of them was, what is to be done with the exterior of the building? It could use a fresh coat of paint, especially over the faded metal areas. Has that been done?
Yes, we painted in between, as you can see from the video, there's mostly windows on the front. We have taken down the awning that was there, and it's ready to be put back up. It has been approved pending the result of this meeting. So we have painted outside between the windows. We've taken out all of the dead shrubs in the front of the building as well, and we're starting to replace the landscape there as well.
I noticed that there are already appliances in the building, and there are windows all across the front, and the way they're in the building, all you see is the backside of the appliance when you're driving down the road. And I think there's going to be a kind of problem, because I understand that you want the customers to come in and see the front of the appliance.
Yes, that was a mistake of the manager that is in charge of the facility that has been remedied. If driven by the past couple of days, I called up with him and told him to turn it around.
Actually, you know, if you turn sideways, it would be better than having turned, look back to the windows. And also, I noticed out the front, the sign, you have a sign already...
The ground sign?
The ground sign, yes.
Yeah.
And it appears, if you're driving by, that the business is already open. It doesn't say that it's coming, it's just the sign is...
Would you prefer us to put a sign in that says coming soon?
Well, until you get approval, you know, it's not really a business.
Yes, it was a misunderstanding between us and the sign company. They were supposed to wait till after this meeting to put it in, so I do apologize about that.
Put a sheet over it and done.
We can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Was that the night we're supported?
Yes.
Okay. I am very hesitant to vote for this. You know, that area is going in a high-tech way, and Lear Corporation is buying sales out and expanding Lear Corporation. The use really isn't, as far as I'm concerned, the kind of business that should be placed in a tech corridor. The statement that Eight Mile Road is not safe, I think you made that statement, in Southfield, Eight Mile Road is safe, and we have very few incidents happening. And that is the type of business that I think should be on Eight Mile Road because of the amount of traffic, the Eight Mile Road corridor, we're looking for new people to get some of the vacant facilities there. But I think that they have to be very selective in what we put in that tech corridor. Hopefully, the customers, those who do business with Lear, would come into Southfield and build future tech corridors. The building is very dated, it needs an entire new facade. To the north, the Old Land and Shopping Center has been redone. And this building is straight on that corridor there, that just doesn't imply it be a good thing for that area. I don't mind used appliances being sold, but it's the way you market them. It can be done with class, and it can be done like a warehouse where, as Mr. Fraser stated, you know, they're in the windows and someone not caring how they are showing to the general public. The last thing I want to see is back end of repair shops in that tech corridor. And so I don't feel that you have really made a bustle of a improvement on that building for me to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Cossack, Mr. Cossack?
I wanted to say that I feel this is a win-win, that we have a vacant, the building's been vacant for a number of years, and we're getting a new business. Southfield, I intend to support your request. I did have a question regarding the resale of the appliances. Do they come with any kind of warranty?
We will do a warranty, yes.
I'm sorry?
We will do a warranty, yes.
Typically, what is the warranty?
We're still debating between a three-month and a six-month warranty, but we will be able to extend it for a fee as promised.
Okay. And, you know, what you're saying is very true. You look at the price today, refrigerators, a thousand dollars, the little ones are fires to hundreds, but it's a big investment for a family. So I think there is a need for them, and I'm all for recycling anything. So we had too many years in this country of throwaway, buy new. So again, I intend to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your line?
I think it's a terrific idea. I think the ingenuity of the people who open that business is terrific, and they're going to do very, very well. So of course, I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Cossack?
The appliances that are brought in that are not repairable, or are going to be disposed of after parts are taken, will there be any of them stored outside, and then they get out loaded, or are they going to be immediately put into the building?
Actually, our facility in Sterling Heights is where all of these appliances are taken and then repaired, so only finished products, only ready-to-be-sold appliances will actually be in the building, and nothing will be outside.
Mr. Jordan?
I wanted to follow up, and I want to be clear, this is a retail facility, so it will not engage people swapping or bringing in materials for, because it says resale, so I want to make sure this is clearly a retail use with a floor plan that someone will come in and shop, buy, purchase, and leave. So the only way you can get appliances is with cash or payment or the cost.
Yes.
And so, say, for someone did say, I have an item, I would like you to pick up, do you engage in that type? Say, I have somebody, I say, I have a washer or dryer, like, was just proposed, are you engaging in that material, in that kind of activity?
I would say that we haven't discussed it, but we would be open to recycling that if they desire it rather than from, I mean...
So what would happen in that case?
They would be taken back to our warehouse in Sterling Heights.
So that's another department, would that, they wouldn't be brought to the storage facility?
Absolutely not.
I have the same concern about storing products in the lobby area or in the outside area, and you said that won't happen.
Nothing will be outside.
The last thing I want to add, you are, do you offer warranties on your products when you sell them?
We will be offering a warranty, yes.
And when you say appliances, tell me, what are some of, you mentioned computers, and then you said washers and dryers, so what are we, what's the range of appliances?
We will have washers, dryers, stoves, whether gas or electric, we have refrigerators, we will have some microwaves, but we don't really get that many of those.
I, unfortunately, we, I'll just tell you this, because we don't have a organ for it, but along that Telegraph corridor, and I think your use is very creative, and it's something that is environmentally refreshing. However, the neon lights inside of the windows of retail, it's my firm belief, it cheapens the aesthetics along Telegraph Road. We already talked about how the, what do you see when you drive past? And I read that there is a landscaping and a maintenance agreement on that. You are on Telegraph, it is a very high-traffic area, and while you're providing a great service, and I think it's good, I also want you to be a good neighbor and maintain that site, and make sure that you, with your signage... Because are you going to keep that canopy that's currently there?
We took the awning down. We will, we have a place to be final along the front of it, and we'll be putting it back up. It has been approved by the sign department pending the closing of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. But I do want you to note that that maintenance agreement, we're very serious about that, and is the name of it, what is the name of the business going to be?
Right Price Appliances.
Right, right.
And I do have a, I do have a schematic of the awning issue at the city.
I would like to...
Could we wait until we finish the question, and then ask Mr. Jordan?
Yes, just listening to the conversation, and heard that there's improvements that are already being made now to the property itself, what is your anticipation that all these things, if you're approved tonight, are going to be done, and when are you going to be open for business?
We would hope to be open in the next two weeks. We do have some, we have already had our inspections for our COO, Donna, so we have a couple of things that they gave us to work on. So the majority of them is electrical, as far as like heat radiating and things along those lines, and our electrician will be starting them next week, pending his permit, so.
I'm definitely impressed with the history of the business owner and being so successful in having businesses like this, and being able to kind of them off the ground, and running and going beyond state borders. So I'm impressed, and would be intending to support this as well.
Mr. Cossack?
Let me kind of get this straight. We're here today for your approval for special use, and you've already had permits of the CEO?
We do not have a COO, but we took...
Have you already expended dollars to retrofit the building?
Yes.
That was an income?
I'm sorry?
That's before, you know, how we were going to vote tonight?
Yes.
Question to the planner, do we in any way encourage people to spend money on the facility before, comes before council for approval?
We do not.
So there's been no conversation to these individuals from the building department planning that, it seems they would get approval tonight and start working?
Mr. President?
In case you didn't catch what he just said, it's highly risky for a person to spend the kind of money that you've already spent in order to... the kind of money that you've already spent in order to, hoping that it gets approved because if this doesn't get approved, all the stuff that's in there has come out. And also, if it, if this is successful, it was a risk, you know, through the days that it won, but you might want to take it into consideration if he's going to start a change.
We have, we have discussed that as well, the owner and I, and his reasoning for starting right away is, you know, and putting so much money into the building already. We've done, we've redone, you know, painted and put epoxy on the floors, and we've put quite a bit of money into the, into the building already. But his reasoning behind that is that he wants to be open as fast as possible if it is approved, and time is money, et cetera. So, he wants to get them done now, so that way, you know, pending review, we can open sooner rather than later.
Ms. Lam?
What I see here is just a lack of knowledge of what should transpire in all the business, and that can be forgiven. I understand what you've done, or we shouldn't hold against you because I know it's a very important type of business for our people today. So, of course, I'm supporting for it, and I hope the council does, and I think it will.
Mr. Pro, when it is a special use, how does, and how do we get to this point that we have nothing, I'm sure you get some input into this, we don't know what kind of landscaping plan or what the requirements are?
Through the chair, the...
Let me just finish. I mean, the concern really is about the parents of being across from there. So, if you could address some of those issues.
Through the chair, what triggers a special use is that it's a non-industrial use in an industrial district. So, the retail component triggers a special use. The site plan issues are done administratively in this district. Of course, there's part and parcel as a special use conditions that the council can place reasonable conditions on the site. We have tried working with the applicant on improving the facade. Therefore, they've agreed to replace the canopy, clean up the front. They're working with the building department on signage. They agreed to trim the trees, put in landscaping in, put a pedestrian connection from the main walk to the front and to their entrance in the building, and do some other ancillary cleanup on the site. All of that has been documented through our reviews at the planning commission and council. This specific use does not require a site plan in the district, and those site plan issues are done administratively. But of course, the council can place reasonable conditions as part of the special use approval.
We are, we're not being asked to approve any of these special conditions, and I think we should. I think we should make that part of the council. Lam?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There is a motion. We have a motion, you support it, but Ms. Jordan supported by Mr. Pro. Well, the question is, should we, these conditions that Mr. Pro talked about should be incorporated into, I think, into this motion? That's the question.
Through the chair, if you look at your packet, there is proposed recommendations, resolution for city council, which includes many of the items.
Who's all of that? All right, so that's already been taken care of, which is spoken, is that correct?
That's correct.
Good, okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr., Ms. Jordan's support by Mr. Lam, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? No. A motion with six pages and one name, so you are approved, but you have conditions to meet.
Thank you, Mr. Pro. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pro, site plan?
Through the chair, our next item is a site plan, SP 1287, a site plan review request of Mike Longley from Bravo Kilo, representing the owner of Fitzpatrick Properties, LLC, to demolish the existing Burger King restaurant located at 26211 West 12 Mile Road and reconstruct a new 2,100 square foot Burger King restaurant with drive-through and associated parking. The property is located on the southwest corner of West 12 Mile Road and Franklin Road. Reason this is before you tonight is that we did not have an approved site plan on our file, therefore, we're bringing it to the council for approval. I have a brief video presentation, and Mr. Longley is available to make some intuitive commentary comments after the presentation and answer any questions the council may have.
SP 1287 is a site plan review request of Mike Longley of Bravo Kilo Incorporated, representing the owner of Fitzpatrick Properties, LLC, for the construction of a new Burger King restaurant. The property is located at 26211 West 12 Mile Road in the southwest corner of 12 Mile and Franklin Road in Section 18 of the city. The subject property is follows the properties to the north across 12 Mile Road, to the west, to the south across Northwestern Highway, and to the east across Franklin Road, reserved to be free general business. With regard to existing land uses, the subject property is developed with a Burger King restaurant. The property to the north across 12 Mile Road is developed with a medical office building. The properties to the west are developed with an office building and various commercial uses. The properties to the south across Northwestern Highway are developed with an office building and a gas station. The properties to the east across Franklin Road are developed with Mr. Jordan Restaurant and the Can Sea Bank. The site contains 1.35 acres of land with 168.64 feet of frontage on 12 Mile Road, 432.17 feet of frontage on Franklin Road, 164.47 feet of frontage on Northwestern Highway, and a depth of 168.64 feet. The submitted site plan reflects the demolition of the existing Burger King restaurant and the construction of a new 2,100 square foot Burger King restaurant with drive-through and associated parking. There are 42 parking spaces required and provided on-site. The elevations reflect a mix of bricks, stacks, stones, ephes, metals, and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during review of the site plan were the site plan requirements of the zoning ordinance. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting regional mixed use for this parcel.
Through the chair, this item has gone to the Site Plan Review Committee and has received favorable recommendations.
Good evening, Mike Longley, 4220 Edison Lakes Parkway, Michoacan, Indiana. Thank you, Madam President and Council, for hearing our proposal tonight. We are, as the presentation suggests, looking to replace the existing restaurant and install a new restaurant in its place. We tried to address some of the things that the old restaurant currently aren't as efficient, the drive-through circulation. We created more green space within the property. We addressed needle, stormwater management requirements. Have worked extensively with Terry and Jeb Spence, Terry Pro and Jeb Spence, to make sure that the concerns that have been brought to our attention were addressed as they were brought. We think that this is the right thing to do with this location, that our franchise agreement is up, which requires us to either remodel the existing site or to replace it. And we choose to replace it if it's possible and we get a favorable recommendation as opposed to renovating. We've been a member of the community for several years. We acquired this site six years ago, and we're active in the community in scholarships and other things and charities. We want to continue to be a part of the community, and we seek your approval tonight.
Yeah, Chair, we've seen this site plan, had a site plan, maybe asked questions regarding this. I think it's a great improvement how it addresses Northwestern and the visibility from Northwestern and also from 12 Mile Road. It's nicely landscaped, and I think all of us agreed at the committee meeting that we approved this site plan.
Well...
Yes, yes, Council. Do you have, are you also linked with the one on Telegraph Road?
Yes, yes, sir.
At least on the design on the, on the new one, is it going to be different than the one on Telegraph Road?
Yes, sir. I've got an evaluation I've ordered here, if I may approach.
Sure, sir.
If I may, this location is made up primarily of stacks, stones. So, every area that is black here is a stack of stone that was brought over the request of Terry and his office.
Excuse me, sir, could you speak into the mic so that this is being televised for me?
Okay.
You can move it.
Oh, no.
You can move that here.
Okay, is that better? I'm sorry. Okay, so, every area that is black is stack stone. This, this can area over here is ephes, and then the areas you see below it, they're in the lighter brown, mixed color, or a brick. And what we try to do with the, or what Burger King has tried to do is update their image to get away from the older-style, man-shirt buildings, bring it more into the 21st century, the more modern. The interior of this will have an internet kiosk where you'll be able to come in without a computer. We'll have computers that we provide, you'll be able to access the internet. We've been doing that in all of our locations that we are remodeling. That's a pretty popular feature. This location will have a soft seating area where it'll have a couch or a couple lounge chairs. It'll have a flat-screen TV. The decor on it will be more modern and have more earth tones in it. And so, we're just trying to update the brand to bring it forward. So, hopefully, Mr. Fraser, Council, you have a good gesture.
Will have Wi-Fi for those folks that want to bring it up?
Yes, we have Wi-Fi. It's free throughout the rest.
And that is a much different design than the one on Telegraph Road?
Yes, it is. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, this, I just must say, looking at the plan and knowing what's there now, this is a drastic improvement to what's on the facility right now, without a doubt. I do have a few questions because it looks like you cannot access immediately the drive-through from the 12 Mile entrance. You'd have to go around the building. Is that correct?
That's correct. That was per the planning and traffic engineer. They wanted to have a one-way circulation throughout the lot.
Is there going to be a differentiation between the signage of, that's on Northwestern Highway opposed to 12 Mile, encouraging drive-through traffic to enter off Northwestern Highway? Or what would be the difference in showing, you know, the two entrances?
Well, as far as signage from the entrance, I, we do not currently have any designation on, you know, this entrance for drive-through. We have one-way arrows of internal signage.
Okay. Just want to make sure that if anyone, you know, is entering off of 12 Mile Road, they know to go around and not create, you know, confusion and a traffic holdup, especially in the moments when it's first being opened and new to the communities.
Through the chair, to Councilman Moss, also, you can see that the parking has been angled to encourage one-way flow as well. So, when cars exit off the Franklin Road, parking spaces, they're, they have to back out and continue in one direction.
What's the timeline of this project?
I'd like to give the council's approval immediately. We haven't gone past the engineering stage at this point, and need to architectural development, which will take about four to six weeks. We could technically start in eight to 10 weeks without council's approval.
Yeah, okay. This is a big improvement to what's there right now?
I don't think we have a motion.
I'd like to move approval of site plan 1287 to Barbara Burger King.
Motion, I am to Cybers Department, Mr. Fraser, to approve that 1287 to Burger King, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Next, we come to the communication portion. We have our first request determined by Bernadine Trout. Is Miss Trout available?
Hi.
Hello. And we step to the mic and please give your name and address for the record, and then you have time and...
Good afternoon, Council, today, excuse me, I've been on the call. In late June, DTE cut down some trees from my house. And in that was, and, and in early July, I got initial notice from code enforcement saying that I am storing firewood on my lawn. And I called them and told them that, first of all, the firewood, the wood was not on my lawn, it was on my neighbor's property, and that DTE had cut down the tree. The lady at code enforcement told me that whether DTE cut them down or not, they were my responsibility to remove it. Well, I knew that the wood was not on my property, but my neighbors are elderly people, and I started to make arrangements to get the wood removed anyway because they're elderly. Well, on Friday, July 13, the City of Southfield came and removed wood. I had a ranch foret to be removed on Saturday. And I was just wondering, why was it that when the wood was on my property, it's my responsibility to move it? When it's on my neighbor's property, it's City of Southfield's responsibility to remove it? So, that caused me to question integrity of the code enforcement department because they didn't know what the property barriers were. That's number one. It also caused me to bring these two questions to the council. Generally, how was it decided when wood is removed from a resident's property? And specifically, how was it decided that my neighbor's wood would be removed by the city, and when it was on my property, it was my responsibility? After putting my request in to speak before this honorable body, I did get a call on July 26 from one of our city employees, and I don't remember his name unfortunately, he began with W. And he explained to me that we have seasonal employees in the code enforcement department, and that one of them must have informed me that Southfield typically requires DTE to remove those trees. However, sometimes they don't, and so, the city would just go and remove the trees. He apologized for the initial notice that I got, and he explained some other things to me. Well, I was relatively satisfied with the answers that he gave me on the phone. However, I do think that the code enforcement personnel should know where property lines are, and minimally should check prior to sending out notices to residents about violations of the code. I also would like to see the training and monitoring for seasonal employees so that misunderstandings like this won't happen in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Proctor, anything you wish to add?
Yes, I'd like to thank the resident for bringing this to our attention. We have many kudos and letters of praise for our code enforcement and... We have many kudos and letters of praise for our code enforcement and our concern for the appearance of the city, but that doesn't mean we can't get better. So we always encourage people through our 24-hour hotline to tell us about any concerns that they have. We appreciate that these were described in detail and we will take them back. Undoubtedly, Mr. Wykowski that you talked to was the manager of code enforcement and committee of appearance activity. And we will certainly work on improving the orientation of any of our part-time personnel to very personnel. We do offer a number of opportunities in the summer to youth and so we'll step up our orientation program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schreber. The next recognition, first, council recognition is Mr. Gerard Martin. Mr. Martin, would you please step around and give your name and address for the record and your outside name.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Martin. Since 1968, I have lived at 1788 Lee Street. And since 1961, I have lived, I have worked here in this city, my city, the great city of Southfield. Tonight, I am not here to talk about those nice guys at Denso, E.E.N.S.O., Denso, Council's favorite urban criminal, and Southfield's best-known hotel, and the city's number one tax collector. Instead, I'm here tonight to make the following suggestion to Council, that you folks. In order to encourage greater citizen participation in Southfield City Government, I propose that Council award an annual prize for the best presentation given at the Council meetings during the communications portion of the general. The prize, the winner will have their picture, a full-page photo published in the Southfield calendar, reenacting their award-winning performance for Council. This photo will be placed above the month of the winner's birthday. This would add needed variety to an already stale calendar, where all signatures of same old photos year in and year out, it's time for change. For example, in this count, in this year's calendar alone, there are four, count them four, uno, dos, tres, cuantos. That's right, four, full-page photos of Company Lake, Council's favorite project, also known as Denso Park. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreber. Mr. Martin, next is our request is from Pamela Gerald. Name and address for the record, please, and you have time and.
My name is Pamela Gerald. People do me a favor. Remember Isaiah, chapter 61, verse 7. Jones Seymour, regardless of the obstacles thrown my way, you are tested to create a paper trail. The false accusations and the reported suspicious incidents, I am even more determined and will continue to be the independent voice for Southfield. If you are watching this meeting on Cable 15 or listening to my voice via YouTube or audio reproduction, I can be reached at P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155, or my telephone at 248-352-9188. I will never lose my joy or my passion to help you, the residents, even while under attack. My telephone is always open to you, the residents, when you need to call me, and as your fellow residents, that's my commitment to you. Whenever you hear a siren, someone in public safety is risking their lives for you, one of your neighbors, someone you know, or someone else in the city. Council, how are we as a city treating our police officers and firefighters? Are we serious about public safety in Southfield? As Clint Eastwood would say, go ahead, make my day. Finally, Council, you made my day by accepting the Safer Grant that was approved by FEMA. This was the right thing to do. This Council knew all of the ramifications once they authorized our fire department in January of 2010 to apply for the grant. That is, for two years, none of the 11 firefighters that we desperately need could be laid off. Council, why did it take so long? I report you used the Safer Grant to market the village, to generate enough money to balance the budget. I predict this city will ask for another village in the very near future. Council, tell the people why and how you reconfigured the grant on behalf of our firefighters. Did you reconfigure before or after you demanded the concession from our fire department? Tell the people why the city is only going to hire four instead of 11 firefighters. What about the other seven? In 2005, the city, since 2005, the city gets over $2 million added extra to the general fund because the firefighters do their own EMS transport. Now let's compare the figures. Safer Grant, $2 million, four firefighters. EMS transport, an additional $2 million extra. Should we use that money to hire four firefighters? Don't forget the public safety village. Last May, should that money be used to hire the last three firefighters? Just a question. We still need a permanent fire chief, one who is in-house, that knows our city and the residents. People, it's time for a change. How come this Council has such a slow response time when it comes to selecting a permanent police chief? One who is educated, qualified, can improve morale, and that's respected by his peers? How come this Council has such a slow response time when it comes to hiring the desperately needed 30 police officers, including the cadets that are already trained? How long should our cadets be police and waiting when we need more firefighters on the street to secure our borders? Has the police department benefited from the village money? Can that money be used to hire more officers? How come this Council has such a slow response time when it comes to giving our police officers the contract they have not had since 2008, the contract they deserve? Remember, people, every time you hear a siren, our police officers are putting their lives on the line for you and someone you love. Our police officers are not asking for raises, just for things to remain the same. Well, what happened to fair contract talks? Council, it's time for a change. The most important thing right now in Southfield is public safety. Council, you said that you appreciate our officers. You even compliment them on TV when it's convenient. Yet you have not done the right thing. Go ahead, make my day again. Give our police officers a contract now. Settle this matter now. Council, if you continue at this rate, you are jeopardizing the people's public safety. Council, tell me and the voters, what's more important? Is it fracking resolutions, free cars, free gas, free trips, free food, or public safety? It's time for a change, Council. It's public safety time.
Mr. Schreber.
With regard to the comments made, it's kind of difficult. There's a number of erroneous concepts that are articulated. If I could, I'll just go down the ones that I think are the most significant to the public. So we'll start with the last comment, that the public safety is jeopardizing the city. That is absolutely not true. We have three to five-minute response time. We also have had virtually no citizen complaints. We continue to have no citizen complaints, virtually no citizen complaints. When we do get them, we do investigate them, and most of the time, they turn out to be simply a misunderstanding, but we have not had any significant mistakes that have been made in terms of the public safety during this period when we are in the selection process. As far as blaming the Council for a delay, there's no blame to be had. We have a very deep and sophisticated group of leadership in this city. We have acting chiefs in the police department that are tremendously competent and have done a tremendous job and will do the job until the selection is completed, which will be soon. This is coming into probably one of the most difficult periods in our history to be either a police chief or a fire chief. And as I stated at the last meeting in the committee hall, in the study session, that we will take the appropriate time to make decisions and the personnel that I recommended will be to a high level of excellence. With regard to the allegation that there will be another village, there will not be another village. This, this village that we requested from the public, which was approved by an overwhelming majority, was the village that we needed to avoid layoffs. We have had no layoffs of public safety personnel in this city and none are planned. One of the basic premises of the original grant, for the Safer Grant, was that you would hire 11 people and turn, then turn around and lay them off in two years. That doesn't make any sense. That doesn't make any sense at all in terms of the families that are involved, in terms of the public expenditure of the training that it takes to make first-class police officers and firefighters, which is our standard here. So there will not be another village. We constructed the village the appropriate manner, went through all of the legal requirements, and we are not going to be bringing another village forward. With regard to the number of police officers that we are short, the number 30 was put out there, that is not an accurate number. With regard to the concept that we are not bargaining with our fire and police unions, that is not true. We have a contract with the fire department, which is, will be going into another year's negotiations, but we have had a contract with the fire department that did have considerable concessions. We are in Act 312 arbitration with our police department, which is a respectful and appropriate way to settle grievances when you can't come to an agreement any other way. We are, we are going through the process, it is the legal process, and we are going to go through it with integrity, and we will come out with a, a decision of the board, the arbitration board. The Safer Grant, as it is reconfigured, is now a good deal for all parties. That means the public, the taxpayer, it was not a good deal as it was originally set up or established for our particular taxpayers in our particular situation. This is not meant to be a negative comment for the constructors of the program, nor anyone on the federal level, okay, because they have to worry about the entire United States, but we have to worry about the city of Southfield. We went to work with FEMA representatives, we explained the position of the city, the decrease in the taxable values of the city because of the large commercial tax base, the largest percentage in the state of Michigan of any city of our size. And when we articulated this, gave them the exhibits, answered their questions, which took us a time to work through because it's a complex set of data to articulate, they were very responsive, very understanding, and they worked with us, and this is a win-win. And as was stated in our press commentary when newspapers asked about this, this is an outstanding example of intergovernmental cooperation between the federal and the city municipal level. That really concludes my comments. I could go further, but of course, we appreciate input, but when there's, when there are some errors that are significant, we feel that we have to address them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schreber. Mr. Lance, you wanted to make some?
Yes, I'm going to say just a few words to Pam Gerald. Pam Gerald, you do not, why are you walking out, Pam Gerald? You don't know what you're saying, Pam Gerald. You have been wrong. You have provoked the people outside, and I hope the people see it. We are an honest government here. That's why you have me, to keep it honest, and it's been honest, and it's been, it's been the best government that I know of in the state of Michigan. We are all for the people. Pam Gerald is a provocateur. She provokes the people. Some people believe her, but don't. You just heard the administrator, he's told you the truth on everything that's happening. And this is how governments run, not the way Pam Gerald wants a government to run. She's wrong. She doesn't know what she's saying. Normally, I wouldn't say anything, and I haven't up until now, but I hope it sinks in. She was sitting there smirking. It's just impossible, impossible. She, her behavior just upsets everybody. She gets up a dozen times, walks to everybody of her colleagues, and some believe her. Well, I'm going to stop now, but I hope she understands, but she went out and she doesn't hear me. That's too bad. I couldn't sit, I can't be quiet anymore. I've known Pam Gerald 28 years. Well, that's enough for now.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Lance, and thank you, Mr. Schreber, for really clarifying the position here in the city of Southfield. And the city of Southfield has been fortunate enough to secure the Safer Grant, which will result in the hiring of additional fire, fire women, fire women staff. However, I do want to make the public aware that the city of Southfield's current budget is 57% goes to public safety, which is police and fire, and that is a great chunk of our budget, goes to make sure that our city is secure, our city is safe, that we have adequate people, police and fire on the street, we have great response time, great EMS, and our city is safe, and our city is secure, and there's no need for people to be alarmed. So I have to, you know, you just can't be quiet when you hear things that can explain residents and residents think that the city of Southfield is not safe. This is not true. We have adequate police and fire in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what Ms. Jordan just said. We had not too long ago a Neighborhood Services Committee meeting of the Council, where actually the acting chief presented raw data of all major crimes that take place in the state of this country and from major crimes that occur in the city of Southfield, there's a downward trend across the board. So, you know, that, that is the broad data that we're dealing with, and there was a handout available at the meeting, and our city administrator can validate that. So that, that's worth promoting in and of itself, but especially when other information is given in the public forum.
Thank you. We have one email, we have one last request or recognition from Geraldine Amato. Ms. Amato, give your name and address for the record, and you have time and.
Geraldine Amato, and I'm here in Southfield almost two months, staying on West 9, Nine Mile, I mean Nine Mile Hill, Nine Mile Road. I wanted to make some general statements about what I've learned about history over time. We recently had a celebration of the anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, the Fourth of July. Many Americans really do not understand the significance of. Many Americans really do not understand the significance of the Revolutionary Era because we're not taught the truth in the history classes in school, nor in the mainstream press. That document, the Declaration of Independence, ends with a pledge, which I believe needs to be renewed. "With a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. Under this current private commercial jurisdiction, we are far removed from the principles of the republic. This flag that we pledge allegiance to an inanimate object is representative of a coast-to-coast federal reservation. And if you study what has been done by the controllers of the federal government to each individual Native American tribe that those controllers wanted to subdue, you will see that the same project is being worked out coast-to-coast." I can only make general comments here because of the limitation of time, but my family has been a victim of organized crime within public institutions, so I know what I'm talking about. I have come to study a bit of Patrick Henry, one of the Revolutionary Era statesmen. He was not apparently a writer, he was an orator, but some of his speeches are still recorded, and I urge people to look those up and to read them, particularly those in Virginia Constitutional Convention during that era when they scrapped the Articles of Confederation and adopted what's now called the U.S. Constitution, the Federal Constitution. If you read what Patrick Henry stated, he was against the adoption of a central government, which we now have. All the agendas on our municipal bodies' agendas are all blueprinted from Washington, D.C. When you look around Southfield, as you will look around other cities, we are no longer in control of our food supply, our arable land has been built upon, we talk about the cosmetics of landscaping, but we're not providing food for our local populace. And if the masterminds decide to close down our resource of food coming in on ships and trucks and airplanes, we will be without sustenance and support because we are not in control by ourselves. Our careers are linked to the corporate world, who are owned by the owners of the wealth of this nation, and if we track what has happened, the owners of the banks of cartels, the three of which are stationed and headquartered in Washington, D.C., the Federal Reserve, the IMF, and the World Bank, the people who own those banks of cartels own us. We possess things, but we do not have ownership any longer. And I think of this man, Henry Ford, that has a history here, I read not too long ago, that one of the things he stated that I never heard before was, he said, the senior one, "I believe that the American people really understood the issue of money, there would be an armed revolution by tomorrow morning." Actually, Patrick Henry, what I must say, he said that I never learned in school, "To erect and concentrate and perpetuate a large moneyed interest must, in the course of human events, create two problems, the prostration of agriculture to the feet of commerce and a change in the federal government fatal to American leveraging." We are under a private commercial jurisdiction, we are being set up for economic collapse, the contracting of the economy that we are all enduring now with plants and backwinds. If we look at the history of the Federal Reserve Bank and how it evolved into place, and we know of two presidential assassinations that we were never told in school, nor we told today, that were related to the confrontation of those presidents, Kennedy and Lincoln, those are the two famous ones. There were three others, McKinley, Harding, I think, and Garfield.
Your time is up, Ms. Amato, I have to call, your time is up.
Oh, you don't give you like 30 seconds?
No, no, your time is up, you have to keep your own time, your five minutes is up.
Oh, I didn't know, I'm the first time here, I was not told.
But I told you at the beginning, you have five minutes. And please give your address to the clerk sitting here. You didn't give out.
Okay, well, if I'm welcome to come back, I'll try to come and finish next time.
That's fine.
But I thought, I didn't know I had to keep my own time, I thought you would give me nine seconds.
I, I know, no.
Okay, fine.
No, we're done.
Why do you need enough time?
I'm not, I'm just letting you know, but I did tell you you have five minutes.
I know, but I'm new here.
I'm sorry.
Have a break.
I'm sorry, but I have to be fair to everyone, so I can't give you anything.
And then here you cut off anybody else?
No one else went over their time. All right, council, we've come to the council portion. Is there one more speaker? No, this person is done here. We maybe just call to make the call to the audience. Toby Rhodes, I was told this person would not be here by our staff. All right, we come to council portion.
Madam Chair, your matter of security, the President.
Mr. President.
I move that we approve the expense reimbursement report for Sophie Jordan to attend the Leadership Institute, supported.
Motion, Madam President, supported by Mr. Moss.
Aye.
All the motions have been carried. Anything else, Council?
Yes, Madam Chair. But Gerald, I'd like to first congratulate our Southfield students. In the Southfield Sunday's last issue was a nice insert that listed all the students, the colleges, the grade scores, and scholarships, and I was just very pleased and proud of the grades, the scores, and all those that are going to Under College, and I just wanted to congratulate each and every one of them. The other thing I'd like to put before the Finance Committee Madam Chair is, June 15th, we received a copy of a letter regarding the Southfield Fire and Police Retirement System Annual Financial Report, and the last, second to the last paragraph indicates that their expenditures exceeded revenues by $12 million. These funds, when there is a shortage in the pension system, that is spread amongst the taxpayers of this city, and we really sit back, at least I haven't seen a report from them on their investments as we do Sues or any of the other pensions, but this one in particular, if they fall short, that is on your tax bill. And so I would like to get this on the Finance Committee Madam Chair and explore some way we can find out what's going on with that board. The other item that I'd like to make up here is that at the last meeting, we were talking about tax abatement, and we mentioned that there was a policy, it seemed like it was new to some individuals and not existent to others. I would like to have that on again before the Finance Committee, so that if it is a negative to have a tax abatement policy, then we should explore whether or not we should abandon it or change it, bring it up to date, or follow it as it is presented. The other item that I would like to discuss at the Finance Committee meeting is having a travel policy on elected officials, so that we can get the expenditures in on time and find out how they are budgeted. In other words, some are passed out between budgets, and I think that has to be clarified. The last thing that I would like to mention is that the Michigan Municipal League is having their convention up at Madden Island, and talking to Council Secretary, you know, I seen that registration is almost $400 per elected official, room rates were $250, there's travel, that boat is traveled by car, over two days, approximate cost would be around $1,500 per individual attending the convention. I think in these days, when they're cutting the hours in the library because there are not adequate funds to keep them open as they have been, that it should really be discreet how we are going through these things, and especially Michigan Municipal League, they see what is a burden among the taxpayers to each and every city, and if you look at the Detroit bills most recently, you know, the amount of villages that have been requested by municipalities is just unbelievable, and it just shows how much work it really is trying to maintain services to the general public. And I think that the Michigan Municipal League should have found a more reasonable place to hold a convention, so that those who are unable to pay, those afraid to attempt, would be able to. I'm sure those are the things that might have one another, and that is regarding one we care that we had on site, especially news, the request for appliance telegraph room, and even though we do not see that at site plant meetings, it'd be nice to have a rendering in our materials that shows what changes are going to be made, as well as, you know, we speed Jeff's additions and requirements, but, you know, we're trying to enhance, we have curb appeal in all areas, that building is pretty well made, and, you know, at Twomouth Greenfield, for example, they have that sports kind of store, they sell hats, Michigan hats, state hats, and all that, and they never came to the city to have a landscape plan, and it's unbelievable, a major intersection in the city, should come into our city. Jerry Kowalski has done a great job of trying to work with them, but, you know, it's all that's dated, it's full of weeds, there's brush that is overhanging over the sidewalk. We write, on Saturday, we're not going to attend with Mr. Sharet and Jerry, and putting a couple hours to look at these places, and when we have a change of ownership, we should be able to look back at the previous site plan that we used and make sure that the plannings that we first approved would either be maintained or changed or updated or cleaned up. And I think we have to do a lot of work on those kinds of things to make our city look sharp. And we have a long range of Crown Street that is really a nice, lit and well-done drugstore, and across the street you have this place that looks like it needs a real facelift. So that's it, Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I will be working with Mr. Sharet in getting these items before the Finance Committee.
Well, I'm going to refer the travel policy and the tax abatement issues to the Finance Committee, and I think we should follow the study we've done, Council, on these other issues that you brought up. I think there's some good points to leave.
Thank you. We will schedule a meeting with the Finance Committee and prepare for the committee hall to present our bid.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, I have a few items here. First of all, a concept I'd like for us to explore, banning the large clothing recycle bins that are going on all around the city. On one, right at 10 Mile and Toad Bath, there are actually three that are flooded right in. And to me, I think they're beginning to be a nightmare for the city, and they're all everywhere, so if there's some kind of way we can explore banning them, because they just don't look good in the city, I know, and who knows where the clothes go, because there are various, there are different names of the companies on each of the bins. So that's the first item. Second item, a few, probably there are a few weeks now, I brought to the attention and need to have either a police officer or larger sign right at Evergreen Northwestern 10 Mile, right where that Coney Island is. Because, you know, I hate to say, there may be a fat accident there, because the people just totally ignore that left side of the sign. So I don't know if we can get a larger sign, Mr. Sharet, or if we can have the police just kind of go out the way and give out tickets. But we've got to make our residents not ignore the signs that we have in the city, because they're for their safety. And so that sign is constantly being ignored. That's in my main drive every day, and I see people violate that all the time. And lastly, I would like to recognize, there was an individual I met yesterday, and she wanted to just be introduced, because she's on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. We've had a number of, I think, in front of you, special conversations about clothing bins that are popping up everywhere, and parking lots, we don't want to drill it gently enough, so I do think we have to have a discussion about that.
We, this weekend, we spent some, Mr. Wodkowski and I spent considerable time really taking a look at how we could turn up the heat on certain things that have, you know, solider improvement, that's one area. We did, there was one shopping center that right now, you know, is in need of some attention, and so, and that's being done. I see some work being done in one of the establishments there that was formerly vacant, hopefully will be filled shortly, but we noticed that one of those bins was placed on that property without authorization, and so that will be, that is going to be gone this week. And so I think it is worthy of a discussion, and it's certainly not that we are not concerned people, because we are. We do have a human services department, it's one of the few cities in the state that still funds a human services department, and that's because we care about people. We know that the city is more than brick, a lot more than just brick and mortar, so we are going to, we'll take a look at that, but the whole thing about appearance, certain property was brought to our attention by the mayor, we paid that certain property a visit this weekend, and we will continue to place a lot of attention on the appearance of the city. The residents deserve that. Thank you. And by the way, through the chair, in short, your persistence is noted on the sign, and we have made some attempts, but apparently have been successful, so we're going to talk to our sign folks and also reiterate it to, as far as the traffic violations, but I think the key is that we do the sign, it should write, it is working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharet, we should, I don't know how we handle this thing on the bins, but some of these bins are taking up parking places, we don't know if they're legitimate organizations or not, we might want to consider a permit.
There was one, there were two of them brought to our attention, that did enter the sight line, those have been removed by the business owners, but the whole idea needs a discussion, comprehensive discussion.
Let's put that on a future agenda, we definitely have to have some sort of...
Yes, we'll place that on a future items list that we keep.
Right, but do some background work at the staff level, and then see what we can do. All right, anything else, Council? We have an expense report here from Ms. Jordan, or the National University of Michigan, did you?
We did that earlier.
Is that approved? Okay. I have enough, but I don't, you know, my...
I was about to say something.
Yes, I have, I have, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that's going to be the council portion. And my wife and I went to, we're going to have some work done in our, we're going to just operate in our home, and we went to a location that was specialized in kitchens and baths, and I was really pleased, it was, unfortunately, it was in Birmingham, that along that strip, the store that we were in, along that same strip, there were complementary businesses. This business next door was flooring, the one next to it was a paint store, and so there were complementary... were complementary businesses, so you could park one time and do, go to a place. And I don't know, I don't know if it was accidental that they did that, or if that was part of a plan, but I would ask that our planning department take a look at it, see if there's a way that we could establish those complementary type businesses, encourage people to, when they come into the planning department, to look for a complementary type business that has an empty, an empty place. Because I thought it was great meeting myself. I don't know, I don't know how to do it, but it was, it worked, so.
May I comment on this?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Sager.
At National League of Cities, we have presentations on just that, and they use the website, so that when you want to set up, if you're looking for an opportunity to do business in the community, the things, the design and the type of businesses, you could type in paint store, home improvement, maybe a better term, and where else they were located, or medical supply, or whatever it was. And if I remember correctly, East Coast, Florida, was used as a model community that's doing this. The underscoring thing that the presenter said is that many times, people are making decisions about our community and you don't even know it, because they're, they're doing the research online. And I know I brought this up before, that as Todd Price and others on staff have been expanding our use of the website, that this would be a very valuable tool for us.
Thank you, Mr. Sager. Anyone else? All right, next we have the mayor's portion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve the expense report for Lawrence for attending the U.S. Saudi Business Conference. Pardon.
Archbishop Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'm going to stay on this one.
I have to consult with the city attorney, because our policy says we can't sustain unless we have a...
For an extension, the member would indicate what the reason for the extension is, either there's a financial interest or a pure incentive interest.
I just need more explanation, and I do feel I can go down this right now, tonight.
Is it related to the age of the area?
Well, not yet, I just don't want to discuss it until I get further explanation.
All right, so we have Archbishop Mr. Frazier, and Porta Guy.
Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you. All in favor?
We did already.
Sorry, sorry. All right, um, next comes administration, Mr. Scheret.
Madam Chair, I do have something.
Oh, go ahead.
I think that it should be discussed if there's an issue with travel, and I heard the council gave some things about, his complaint about travel. The whole process that we use, it should be discussed, so it's not at the voting time. If there are any concerns, there should be a process. And I would appreciate that, because I feel very strongly that the way that concerns are handled, especially internally, that it's done in a way that's not productive, we're redrawing the issue. So I would appreciate if we had a truthful meeting of process, and concerns can be voiced without it being an undermined process. I have, I went into compliments of Woodlands Civic Association on their picnic. They were just one of many that I had the opportunity to attend this year. And I complimented them, and I just wanted to say to all the neighborhood associations out there who are working hard to continue to develop that sense of community in our city, it is a, it is so refreshing, because in the city of South Hill, we all know that it's the blocks of the neighborhood associations, those communities, that give, that makes South Hill a great city. And it was just an energized group of people. One of the beautiful sections, and we have so many in our city, every section is beautiful. But it was, it was refreshing, and it was nice to be there. Also want to share, and I don't want to be, this to be perceived as a negative, but I received a phone call from the, from the president of St. John's Health, and having a real concern about the area around progress out there. It was not a pleasant conversation. If any of you, you know, we talk a lot about other parts of the city, and sometimes we even point our fingers and say Northland is an area that's not desirable, and sometimes people in the DDA is here making a presentation, it's a time to criticize. But Northland DDA area is a part of South Hill. It is our city. And when you cross Eight Mile, we've been talking about this sense of place, that when you cross Eight Mile and come into South Hill, you should know you're in South Hill. And I'm very concerned about that area. If you look at the maintenance of the buildings, if you look at Eight Mile, I mean, we're starting to have homelessness, living under the bridge. I mean, living. There are people you can see literally sleeping, there are mattresses, there are the carts gathered. Then I, and I hope that we are engaged enough to know that we must make a difference. In the street hall, with one of our wonderful developments over in the DDA, whether Kroger and CBS, I get numerous complaints about people being approached by people soliciting money, by people who are in the shopping center, actually people gathering there every day, sitting on crates, and customers are going in and out. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not, this is not acceptable in South Hill. And I, what I'm saying today is that we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and point out that the DDA is not, you know, it's easy for us to sit here and say it's their fault, but this is our city, and this is our image. Every election, we talk about the Northland area. And women have to invest, and be serious, and DDA, city, county, code enforcement, everybody needs to be at the table. And I'm telling you, one of the areas that I'm most concerned about is that bus station. We have activity that is not becoming, criminal activity, that's not succumbing to the city of South Hill. And we cannot sit there as elected officials and turn our hands from that. It's our city, and it's uncredible. There is, you know, we talked about, is there surveillance of that area? Because we've heard of people just standing at the bus station and possibly distributing drugs. The bus is going, and they're just standing. Well, is there surveillance? Well, guess what? Northland has surveillance, but they're only surveilling to see if anything is happening within the home. And that is outside of them, it is not their property, the city of Detroit. We must, we've got to step it up, because this is not acceptable. I can tell you, and you know the mode that I'm in right now in campaign mode, that's the attack I get all the time. The city of South Hill, you know, that Northland area, and we, I mean, I'm serious about this. I am very serious, and what can we do? I don't know all the answers, but I'm confident that in the city of South Hill, we have the resources, and we have the political leadership to start turning that around. And I've talked about code enforcement, I'm passionate about it. And when I brought it around in that area, I'm not proud of it. I'm not. When I go into those buildings, I see these buildings, and I know they're not a Class A building, but, and I can't, I mean, I've started talking about the problem buildings in that area. And you know, I, all of us have brought some issues, but that one building that we had to go in, I was told at a beauty salon that that existed, and I told them no way that existed in my city, not in South Hill. And I took my time, drove over there, and because the building wasn't secure, able to walk through it, and I was totally disappointed. So it's our building, it's our public works, it's our police. It is, it is us. And we can, I mean, this is, this will be our legacy if we turn that area around and go to our planning department, our economic development. Are we perfectly with them to redevelop that area? Are we bringing those millionaires outside, I can tell you. I know from a fact, Shelley has talked to those people a number of times. She has gone to the conference of retail shopping centers. I have joined her, I went when it was Nick Banda here. I know who talked to them, but it's past talking now. It's past talking. And we're going to have to become serious about that. And I'm confident we will. I think from this point on, we should be able to tell our citizens we're going to make a difference. And I'm confident we can do it. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I'm glad that, compliments to Kathy Prada, is the achievement of our children in this city. We have a lot to be followed by educational system. And while all of us are challenged, and I just want to go back to the public comment that was made too, I would never support another village in this city. I can tell you, we have never talked about having another, it was painful for us to even get to the one that we went to. But there is not a city that's existing now that hasn't cut that much sight, haven't reduced their budget, because if we had not, we would be in a situation of financial dire. And so we have done what we needed to do, and we are maintaining a safe community. And if we had not changed the way we do business, and any contract, or anyone saying, I just want things to stay the same, the reality is, is that this economy, our taxes, our residents, none of that is the same, so we cannot remain the same. And we, it's a process, it's a partnership for respect, negotiation, and getting the justice. So I'm proud of what we have achieved, accolades to the council, I make sure that I say that, because in setting opportunities and what you have to do, and with our city administration, this has been not an easy time. And I'm proud of the decisions that have been made. I must close with, there is an election next Tuesday, and I hope everyone will exercise their right to vote. There's always discussion during election time about people coming out to vote. And I just want to say, women, we have not had the right to vote 100 years. We only have the right to vote since the 1920s. And we had a lot of the civil rights movement where we had to fight, and people die. I remember watching my grandmother watch the civil rights movement, and I was a child, crying, and the dogs were attacking people, and they were spraying the horses, and watch her cry, a person from the South who lived through all that. And so many people take it for granted, the election is our decision, and I say this every time, is that exercise your right to vote, because when you don't vote, you don't have a voice. When you don't have a voice, this political process will ignore you. And so many people complain, and I don't vote because no one hears me, and no one cares. Well, if you don't, if you don't use your voice, you will be ignored. So I just have an act for everyone to go to the polls and vote. Thank you.
Ms. Timor, can we go back to the council portion from that?
Yes.
There are two things I wanted to mention after that. First of all, and Mayor Lawrence reminded me, talking about neighborhood associations, I want to give kudos to all of the neighborhood association presidents that showed up last week. It was incredible. We had a workshop put on by our Community Relations Department, and here we are in the middle of July, on a hot day, and over 70 people attended, caring about their neighborhoods, caring about the city, and sharing ideas of how we can strengthen and keep our neighborhood associations going. Mayor Lawrence was there, Council President Timor, myself, then Councilman Ross attended. It was an excellent session, and we had so many people out of, you'd think maybe in summer, it'd be on vacation or in a different mode, but they came out because they care about the city and their neighborhoods. And I really appreciated seeing all those folks, and they're passionate about their neighborhoods. It was a very good evening. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I assume my colleagues have all received a, seems to be a foreign email, but there, I've received three of them now, from the Wildlife Federation, about a city challenge, an environmental challenge, and it's an opportunity for a grant. And I'd like to make an administrative referral more receptive. And Mr. Scheret, if you happen to receive the email, I'd be happy to forward.
It's somewhere, I've read it today.
Yeah. If we could look into that, it's an opportunity, there's money available, they're looking for cities to participate. I'm not sure if it fits for us, but it's $30,000 to $50,000 grant, perhaps something that we could benefit from.
No, I haven't seen that.
Provided this information, it is about the environment, some ideas on conservation.
Is it National Wildlife Federation?
Yeah. Resident Robert Thompson and Peggy Collins, two names that come to mind right away that sent this in.
Were those that come to us, that?
And in our council email. But I did look it over, and I did contact the Federation, and got a response back today, but my computer went down, so I don't have the whole knowledge in front of me of what the response was. So anyhow, I'd like to make that referral.
The word environmental responsibility, it's worth a look.
Yes. All right, next item, Ms. Jordan.
I did want to say, items related to the mayor's comments, and I have to say, I totally agree with you. I happen to go, I normally go to the Target, they're on South Hill Road, the Target in Farmington, but just last week, I went to the Target in Northland, and I was literally appalled at seeing that whole bus terminal issue, and I think we would not be responsible like these officials if we did not deal with the Northland with the, that whole bus area. So something has to be done. We need to go to the table and see what we can do to really put Northland back on the map, because it is part of South Hill, and I've ignored. And the party's coming to the table with an open mind, so I had to...
Mr. Wodkowsky?
Let me, I got into this with the Department of Transportation. The big problem is, is that DDOT allow smart to go into Detroit. So what happens is, if you're working in South Hill, you come to that depot, and then you have to wait for Smart Bus to pick you up. Sometimes it's two and a half, three hours, believe it or not. Uh, those individuals sometimes get up at five o'clock in the morning to get over to that bus stop to be picked up by kidney or by Smart to get to work. So that, that amount of time a, a big individual is waiting just, just lends itself to some activities that you really are negative. And what we really ought to work on is the inefficiency of that whole situation, uh, where Smart should be able to deliver an individual to Detroit and D-DOT ought to be able to deliver them into Southfield, or Smart could bring their people right out to the suburbs. Their offices in Detroit, Smart's office in the Buell Building. You know, it just makes sense. If your office is at their headquarters, why can't you create a bus, uh, route so that you can take people from Detroit to the suburbs and suburbs back to Detroit? And, and that's what the real problem is. You've got this waiting period of time, uh, and, and we get a lot of complaints that, you know, these individuals can't get to work in time. And so what happens is, a lot of people go there and pick up their employees and get them to work, those that really need them. The other thing about, about, uh, those that are under the bridge and, and bothering people in, in shopping centers, there's, there's all kinds of books written on it. You have to have zero tolerance. You go in and you have to make them understand that we're closing the area real heavy and, and make whatever arrests you do and move people out of there if they can alone. And, and you know, at one time, Northland had a larger police department than we did. And they also had, uh, taken the, oh, where they are, bona fide officers could make arrests, they carried guns. I mean, that's the way Northland Mall ran for years. And it was, and was run in a different, in a, in a business way, in the atmosphere. Today, uh, we have people who have taken advantage of, of a, an area they call the shopping center, and they don't really care about fixing anything up. So all they care about is getting the cash rent from their, wherever tenants are, and, and walking away with a profit. And they ought to be towed to Mark. Either do, tow to Mark or get out of town. And, and I mean, it's about time, you know, instead of talking, I mean, I don't know, um, what the, what the meeting would be and who would be at that meeting, but, you know, New York had problems and they, they started with a zero tolerance, um, and, and everything just quelled. And Boston did the same thing. And, and here we sit, we see a problem, and I'm saying this, you know, you go in with, uh, uh, a hit list and group and clean it up. And, and that means the businesses that don't want to, to, uh, tow to Mark, they go too. You know, it's, it's in state within the law, of course, but, but I mean, you know, and DDA has to get tougher and, you know, I mean, they come before council and it's either gotta be assessment or something that's going on, or something they're doing, or, or tearing down a building, but, you know, we had good things happening. There was a twenty-eight million dollars worth of reconstruction and, and, and expansion of, of Open Community College. I tell them, you know, you go to Beaumont, they've got purple lights in the, in the parking lots. You know, you go down to Wayne State, they got these lights, I don't know, the blue or pink or purple, whatever they are. But people feel secure when those things are available to them. And they have walking people. And when people walk and jog and are outside, that, that is intimidation to anybody who tries to commit a crime. And so, I mean, somehow we've got to, to get tougher. And I said, "Zero tolerance and just move along."
I think we've gotta include some discussions with the owners of Northland, because they also own Eastland Mall. They're likely to turn around one mall that was fantastic and surrounding stores and leave Northland the way it is. I think you've gotta, you just can't leave it to the DDA. I think we've gotta step in as an elected body, demand they come to the table, bring other people to the table, really have a good discussion.
Yeah. I'm gonna say, they ought to do it, but they ought to step in.
We, we've gotta do it. We've gotta do it. So... And I just, I know that this isn't a time, but look at what they did with the DMC. The DMC, Midtown had a crime issue. They, they took the policing, um, body of the DMC of Wayne State and also, um, what's the other one? I mean, um, it's three of them, Detroit Police Department. And they had reduced crime in that area because they have joint partnership. Now you have the, in our area, you have OCC, you have, uh, Providence, and you have Northland, and you have Southfield Police. You know, it's nothing else. And one of the things they did at, at Eastland, they moved the bus station from back behind the mall out to the front. So they're not, because right now they're in that cove in their city. And that's part of the reason why they feel comfortable with that activity, because you have to drive back around in there to see any of that activity. So, now, Jim, let's put this one in, Jim. I mean, we really, this is a very important part of our city, is the whole cornerstone, Northland. And I know Providence has done great things. OCC has done great things. But if you still ignore Northland, you've not really developed that area of the city. And it's a crucial area there.
I don't think there's so much being ignored, from what I understand, uh, the, is it the best? D-DOT does not want...
I'm not just talking about D-DOT. D-DOT, I'm talking about everything in that area and putting it on a field of, and really just giving a strategy of...
We can certainly do that.
You know, one other thing has to be, uh, has not been said here, and there has to be cooperation with the city of Detroit. A lot of the homeless people and the people that are out panhandling are on, uh, right across the aisle, um, the bridges there, over the lodge and so on. Uh, I have driven with the mayor down there and, and pointed out, I mean, that's close to where I live, um, I, every time I go downtown, um, there are people there, there's, there's stations there. And the city of Detroit seems to ignore it, as well as the weeds, the proliferation of signs selling everything under the sun, uh, yard signs, uh, it's unsightly. And I know, I have spoken to the Eight Mile Boulevard Association about the signs when they do occasional sweeps, but, um, um, it is, it's, it is a disgrace. And, and a lot of it is, if it, you know, the, um, the people that are on the street don't really, uh, uh, discern whether it's awful in Detroit, they just don't tolerate it there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and it's been going on for, for quite a while.
Um, for that, the fundamental there, we'll talk about some future...
Yeah, one of the, one of the things is, um, and I, I work with, uh, the, uh, Mr. Schubis, that's a guy that, that owns, uh, the mall, the program. And one of the problems that they have with panhandling, and the police are frustrated, because if somebody's panhandling and they see a police car come along, they just walk into store, like they're, like they're a shopper, until the police go away, and then they come back up and panhandle. So, uh, the police have to catch them in the act of panhandling. Uh, they can do something about it, but even at that, when they go to court, it's, you know, it's kind of like a slap on the wrist, and they're back there again. So, we do have to, so that, I, I agree that we need to sit down and find a better way of getting this off done, because what's happened now is...
We will do that. All right, Mr. Schruth, you have the next second.
Yes, um, as a matter of, uh, public information and, uh, for council consideration of approval, uh, in the July sixteenth, two thousand twelve, uh, study session, uh, we reviewed the revised and unified sewer and water services connection loan program. And I'd like to, uh, first of all, comment on the level of policy discussion, uh, of the man city council on this item, uh, because it's, it's, uh, very difficult to understand in some of the terms and the history, it's, uh, rather complex. Um, I'd also like to thank the staff for, uh, quality staff work and the research. Uh, Deputy City Administrator, uh, Fred Zorn, the Building Department, Public Works Staff, uh, and the Legal Department, uh, Sue Ward-Lukowski. Thank you very much, uh, for the, for the work on this. Uh, what we've done, uh, council, I weigh a review, we've taken the four programs that have evolved over the years since nineteen ninety-eight, uh, through, uh, two thousand eleven, to assist our, uh, residents, uh, and businesses in hooking up to, uh, city water and sewer services. Uh, we have a number of, uh, residents and some businesses on, uh, still on septic systems and wells that could benefit, uh, the environment by, uh, hooking up to the, uh, water and sewer system of the city. Uh, if a person has a septic system that passes, uh, the appropriate, uh, public health test, they are not forced to hook up, but there are property owners that we know would desire to hook up to the sewer and water system, and, uh, we're always looking to assist them in that endeavor. So what we've done is we've taken the four programs and put them together, uh, for purposes of the concern for the environment, public health, encouraging the improvement of our housing stock, uh, streamlining, uh, our, uh, procedures and administrative procedures, and most importantly, assisting our, uh, property owners, uh, in tough economic times to, to hook up to the, uh, water and sewer, uh, system of the city. Uh, what we have done is taken these programs and, uh, the easiest way to remember is the number three. Uh, we have a, uh, program to assist, uh, homeowners, our businesses, uh, in this way. Uh, for the first three years, uh, to assist with the cost of the hookup, uh, we would make the first three years, uh, to be interest only at three percent per annum, and the remaining, uh, costs could be amortized over fifteen years for a total term of eighteen years. So three percent for three years, interest only, and then, uh, with the other balance, uh, amortize over, uh, fifteen years for a total of eighteen years. Of course, there is no penalty, uh, for, uh, paying, uh, any of these costs early, and, um, the city is protected, uh, by, through, uh, uh, proper legal channels in terms of the, uh, it being a lien on the, uh, property. Uh, we have an ordinance, uh, and we're, we'd like to, uh, uh, get this program on going as soon as possible. So, uh, the city attorney's office has prepared a resolution that has an ordinance, uh, emergency ordinance within it, and so we ask for council's consideration of approval, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Madam President, I would move the, um, ordinance regarding the revised, uh, unified, uh, sewer and water service connection loan program.
Support.
Motion, Madam Chair, supported by Mr. Fraser. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion has carried.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we introduce ordinance number...
Fifteen ninety-six.
Fifteen ninety-six and enact it as, as an emergency ordinance. Support.
Um, motion, I, Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Cyber, that we enact ordinance fifteen ninety-six.
Introduce and enact.
Introduce and enact ordinance fifteen ninety-six as an emergency. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. We, uh, come to the attorney's question. Ms. Ward, does anything you have for the TV?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Next, we come to the planners, uh, first goes the planner, software engineer portion. So, Mr. Plan has a, um, proposed resolution for ninety-day extension of moratorium. Mr. Gray, go ahead.
Through the chair. Uh, with regard to ponchos and alternative financial institutions, we currently have a moratorium in place which is set to expire on August eleventh, two thousand twelve. Based upon a recent study session with the city council, we are requesting a ninety-day extension through November ninth, two thousand twelve, to give us time to set a public hearing tentatively for September twenty-fourth and to enact regulations.
Also, move, Madam Chair.
Motion, Madam Mr. Percusie, supported by Mr. Mr. Cullen. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. The, uh, extension is granted. Mr. Crowe, uh, now we come to the treasurer. Mr. Longberg.
Madam President, Honorable Counsel, uh, just wanted to give a follow-up, first of all. At the last regular council meeting, uh, council gave permission to issue an RFP, uh, for the refunding and refinancing, uh, three point five million dollars approximately of bonds that the city had, uh, eleven-year term was remaining on them. And we were able, at that time, we were estimating that the savings were gonna be about two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the city. We were able to get very favorable interest rates, uh, proposed by a few of the local banks, and, uh, the winning bid was by PNC Bank, and they were able to go issue us the bonds at one point seventy-eight percent for eleven years, which is a fantastic rate. And, uh, they'll net us a savings of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our city. So I'd like to thank the council for giving us permission to do that, and, uh, hopefully it will be the heat for other opportunities as well to reduce our expenditures and, uh, pass a lot of savings to our taxpayers. Uh, also this evening, uh, we have our annual update for our depository resolution and, uh, asking for, um, renewal of that. Uh, there's a few updates that we've issued. Uh, we have two banks that we're adding, Bank of Birmingham and a new bank that's located now in Southfield, Hansbank. And we removed four banks, as well as also adding four brokerage firms, broker dealers to the list.
I would still move, Madam Chair.
Would Madam Mr. Percusie support Mr. Fraser to step the annual update and depository resolution? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I would just like to, um, state that, uh, treasurer and had Mr. Burge
really hit, uh, and also Denver group very dear, and we reviewed, uh, our investments as well as the depository resolutions and the, uh, we, uh, we should go forth.
Thank you very much. It was at the July seventeenth, uh, uh, council finance meeting that we were able to have Cut Water Asset Management as our consultants from Denver, as well as George Vida, uh, Master Strategies, they're our monitor, as well to, to give an update on the performance report on our investments. And fortunately, uh, with our diversification that we had and with the strategies that we invoked, we were able to be in the top percentile of the country right now, um, as far as the, the investment performance. And so we were able to outperform our benchmarks, and we look to continue that performance. Uh, this, yeah, we have an annual update also for our city's investment policy. At that meeting, we reviewed a couple of different, uh, items which, uh, we should look at to diversify our investment portfolio. Uh, those changes were redlined in the policy, and, uh, we're asking for the renewal of, of and updates, uh, permission, uh, from Madam Counsel.
Uh, the reservation is that council adopt the attached investment policy, the motion, also, uh, Madam Mr. Percusie, supported by Mr. Fraser, that council adopt the attached investment policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, next we have, um, Spencer Park, Earl Longberg, for the Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference.
How can we terminate that?
Uh, and...
I move that we approve the expense report for Earl Longberg for the Government Finance Officers Association Conference. Support.
Motion, Madam Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. We have nothing to schedule, this statement. We have an ordinance, uh...
Madam Chair.
...that, Mr. Fraser.
I move that we enact ordinance number fifteen ninety-five.
Motion, Madam Mr. Fraser...